Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this Tuesday, never in a fifth regular meeting. We don't have a super long agenda today, but let's go ahead and get to it. Commissioner Ward, will you lead us in prayer and pledge to take?
Yes. Lord, we come to you today as we conduct our county business. We pray today as Election Day rolls through that we pray for all the candidates, all the supporters, everyone out there out to vote. Make sure you get out the vote, Lord. We pray for everybody's day today as they progress through their workday, school day, what have you. We also would like to pray for anyone that is sick out in the community that just needs your touch and hand, Lord, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait on Mr. Morone. I think we have some additions to the agenda, correct?
We do.
All right.
Yeah, we do have a couple of laid out items actually on my report amended. I received the quote from People South actually late afternoon yesterday. So that action item has changed slightly. It was included in my original report where I thought that John Deere was going to be the best rate available, but People South was able to beat them. So that action item has changed and that one is action item number 11. And then we also have, let's see, action items 14, 15, and a laid ad for board information. The laid ad number 14 is a final cost update for the TDC Public Safety Services, the reimbursement for St. George Island Volatile Fire Department for their ATV and medical sled. There was just a slight difference in the original estimate that was used versus the actual cost of the items primarily because there was just such a lapse in time by the time that we actually got the spending committee approved, then authorized their purchase, and then they finally, you know, received the equipment.
All right.
And then laid out item number 15 is the closure of the SGI fishing pier for the repairs.
There was nothing else, was there, Mr. Morone, that needed to be added?
No, sir, not. I'm sorry, no, sir, not that I could think of. I think everyone was the only changes.
Okay. All right. All right, so we can approve the agenda with these changes if the board so chooses.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll say.
All right, so the motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion?
Keep vibrating, no.
Something's making some kind of noise. Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Is that what it is?
Yeah. What did it, a mark, a mark?
All right. So next up on the agenda is approval of minutes, payment of the bills.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Discussion commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? If that's unanimous. All right, now we're moving on to public comments. I do have a couple of speaker cards turned in. Mr. Morone, I have two. That's all I know of. Taking an order they were laying here, Mr. Chris Giannis, is it Giannis? Say it again, I'm sorry.
Close enough, it's all right. Morning, Board of Commissioners. With Chris Carey-Johnson Monolith Construction, we're working on the courthouse building and wanted to give you guys just a quick update of what's going on. We've been making great progress, but it may not seem like it if you're not actually looking at every single window and crack of the building. But with some of the delays of the storms and some of the issues we've had along the way, I think we were slated to finish the end of January, but right now it looks like we'll be done before the end of the year. Currently, we have all the windows and all the glass has been replaced in every window that was broken. Some windows had plywood on them, some windows had, you know, missing pieces. So all that's been replaced. All the glazing of the actual windows has been completed, the grinding of the window frames and the painting's been done. And now we're working on the actual building part of itself. As you can see, we're on the annex part right now. You can kind of see the big gaps there that are being grinded out and filled and resealed up and caulked. The last part of actually enclosing the building is sealing up all the brick and the actual walls, which will be the very last thing after the building gets washed and sealed. But we had the kind of structure where the windows were sealed, then we can go on to the next few steps. And really, the last remaining item is just the drainage work that needs to happen in the yard. We were gonna originally start that first, but there was some confusion. We've had some answers now from architects and engineers, and we're gonna do that at the very end so we don't affect any of the man lifts and anything else that needs to get around. But it may not seem like it, but we're making very good progress. I'm very happy with what's been going on. Our superintendent Josh has been out here every day, and I think he's pretty much examined every square inch of that entire building from top to bottom. The roof has been washed, all the roof drains have been repaired, so I'm confident by the time we turn this thing over to you, that's gonna be a sealed building for sure. There's been some cross communications with some roof issues. That's been handled now too. So it's one of those things, it's a job that we take a risk on, but I'm super confident that we'll have this thing sealed up for you guys by the time we turn it over. So there might be some interior repairs that we could talk about after, but once we get this thing sealed up, it's gonna be like that for at least our lifetime. So I just wanted to give you guys a little update on that if there's any questions.
Any questions, commissioners?
No, just thank you for the update.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Richard Bracken.
Good morning, good morning, Board of Commissioners. I'm Richard Bracken, Port St. Joe, Florida. So I introduced our recycling services to you guys about a couple of months ago. Just wanted to give you an update of where we are. We have hopefully our final meeting with the Port of St. Joe, November 13th coming up. Once we get that done, we can actually start cleaning up the site and setting up our containers. We can start delivering our bins to our customers. We've actually had a really good positive turnout support for our services. We've had close to 70 customers signing up for our recycle collection services. That's going from East Pointe to Mexico Beach. This last week, we had a booth at the Florida Seafood Festival Friday and Saturday, and we received close to two dozen positive inquiries about our subscription collection services. And Ms. Sanders, we had probably a half a dozen residents coming out of Carabel. So when Christian, now we're talking about Carabel, we're talking about maybe pushing it out into mid, late 2025. I think we may bring that forward, so we will probably start making an introduction to the city of Carabel sooner. Just to let them know and kind of understand what are the ordinance and stuff within the city of Carabel, and then we can start marketing to the city of Carabel and east of that area. They seem to be very, very interested in our recycle collection services. So if we get the green light from everybody, we'll start marketing to that area.
Thank you for your update, sir.
Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Mr. Morone, we didn't have anything that needed any action from Mr. Howard, did we?
No, Mr. Chairman. So you'd asked that I speak to each of the directors and let them know only the ones with action items you require their presence at today's meeting.
That's correct.
So everyone except for emergency management was, everything else was information.
Okay.
And that includes what I did, I asked Mr. Solomon and Mr. Kirschenbaum, I deferred them to the next meeting on the 19th.
Okay. So the only thing I will say to make sure that the public's aware, we did hire a new person with Park and Recreation. Mr. Joshua Odom was hired by Mr. Fonda Davis for Parks and Rec. But if you have any questions, commissioners, or any other reports, you can just get in touch with those department heads. Again, we were just trying to keep the meeting short today since it is an election day. Ms. Amanda Adams, you're here on behalf of Director Daniels.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sorry Jenny couldn't be here. She's not feeling well today, so I'll be here for her.
Yeah, I talked to her yesterday. I could tell she wasn't feeling well.
Same here. Yeah, hopefully she gets better soon. She got her some medicine, so let's hope it gets through quickly. So we got three action items for y'all this morning. Our first one is gonna be the approval and retroactive signing of the LSE for Hurricane Helene, which was signed on October 7th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with clarification.
Okay.
Second.
So a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Ward, go ahead and ask your question.
I just want the public to be aware that LSE stands for Local State of Emergency.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Okay. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Go ahead, Ms. Amanda.
All right, our second one is we request the approval and signing of the federally funded subaward grant agreement for Hurricane Debbie.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, with a second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's also a five oh vote.
And my last item for y'all this morning is the approval, is request the board's approval and signing of the Emergency Management Performance Grant for the fiscal year of 2425.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any questions or discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That was all my action items.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something for Amanda. Thanks for being here today. I did speak with Jennifer yesterday. She did sound, bless her heart, pretty bad. Hope she gets feeling better. But I just, I've been getting some calls still from public and people in the community about debris pickup. If you could just kind of elaborate on that. I spoke with Jennifer about it yesterday. I know that the debris company, the debris was supposed to be picked up on, I believe it was the 22nd.
Yes, our contractors are done with their portion of the debris pickup. However, if somehow somebody got missed or they weren't here during it, if they'll get us their name, number, and their address and either call or email it to our office, we'll get over and work with Fonda about getting that debris picked up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amanda. We appreciate it.
No problem. Not all you had for me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, y'all have a good day.
So none of the other directors' reports had any action, correct, Mr. Morone?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we'll go straight to the bid opening.
The first bid that we're gonna open today is the St. George Island Beach Park Facility's upgrade. The, see, the project consists of demolition of an existing basketball pickleball court and constructing one shared basketball pickleball court, a new pickleball court, two pavilions, a water fountain, a bicycle parking rack, and all other associated items. We did have a large pool of contractors that actually showed up to our mandatory pre-bid meeting. There were eight contractors in attendance, so that's a really good sign. And today, it looks like we've got quite a few bids to open as well, so very excited to get going on this one. And this will be funded out of your TDC Beach Park Facilities funds. And let's see, the first one that we are opening today is from Premier Surface Solutions Incorporated, and they are from Tallahassee, Florida. Again, Premier Surface Solutions Incorporated. Their total base bid is 278,900. Again, 278,900.
And is this project gonna require a bid bond, Commissioner?
Let's look here. I believe so. Yes. Yep, bid bond is included. This next one is going to be from GeoFlora Group, and they are located here in Appalachia Cola. Again, GeoFlora Group located here in Appalachia Cola. The total base bid is 327,602.80. 327,602.80. We do have some bid alternates, but that is actually for vinyl coated chain link fence and windscreen, so I won't read those just because they're kind of minor items.
Bid bond?
Oh. Yes, bid bonds included.
Thank you.
This is Premier Surface Solutions again.
Two bids. Need to do the same on the envelope?
Oh, okay. Oh, the first one is basically dated. Okay, 278,900.
They both the same project?
They are the same project. They did submit on two different dates, and they actually have two different amounts.
Or you said both, right?
Okay. Yeah, very strange.
Boy, somebody needs a doctor.
Yeah.
Can we go with the cheaper?
Well, their second bid is actually more expensive.
98 cents, I guess you have to read it for the record.
Let's see, it was Premier Surface Solutions Incorporated, actually from Tallahassee. They were received on different days, about two weeks apart. Um, they, they were received on different days, about two weeks apart. However, the second bid is actually more expensive than the first one, so of course we like the first one better. Um, it's, the total base bid is two hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Total base bid of two hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred fifty dollars, and we will have to sort that one out.
Okay.
That's an inflation.
That's a first.
They went back some way.
Never seen that before.
That's inflation, just on that bid, that was last week.
Mr. Chairman, they watched the meeting, so they saw how Commissioner Amerson would react to this.
There's no telling.
Okay, um, this next one is, let's see here. This one is from BGN Contractors, and BGN Contractors is located in Panama City, Florida. Um, BGN submitted a total base bid of six hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Say that one more time, please, Mr. Chairman. Six hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Did they bid twice?
Did they manage to get a bid bond in with that?
Or, is this the stormwater?
This is SGI Beach Park.
Is it?
Wow.
Did they have a bid bond, Miss Erin? Sorry.
Yes, they do have a bid bond included.
I guess we need to check, is that company have bid it twice, do they have two separate bid bonds?
Yeah. Pretty strange. Okay.
It seems like that's a big for this group, because this one says-
There should be at least two more.
Stormwater.
Well, there should be North Florida Construction.
That's probably where that second one came from.
Oh, North Florida Construction?
Yeah, but this is for-
Oh, stormwater.
This is for stormwater.
Which actually, why isn't that on the agenda?
What?
The stormwater, I was kind of thinking-
All three are on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's the last one.
Yeah, they're all three on it.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
You got three, you got three bids.
Okay, okay, I know, I didn't, I didn't see the sheet, and I was like, oh, maybe that's next time.
So that, that's it for that project?
Yes.
Yes, that's going to be it for that project.
So, Commissioner Schuler, how do we handle this one that submitted twice?
And pardon, repeat that.
How, how do we handle this with, with one company submitting twice? Is it something we need to at least discuss before we send to a review committee?
Well, it's a case of first impression, I would say send them all for review, because potentially at least their low bid, for some reason, may be disqualified, and they'd be stuck with the second one, but I'd say send them all on, let, let them be reviewed, uh, for compliance, and get a recommendation back from the engineer.
Alright, uh, Ms. Erin, who's the review committee for this facilities upgrade project?
Uh, this one will actually be released to Dewberry Engineers, because they are the engineers for the project.
Okay. Alright, and it's just these four, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to, uh, send this to Dewberry for review and recommendation.
Yeah.
That made.
Alright, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on to the opening the other bids, I want to bring up, uh, because I had discussion with some of Commissioner Sanders constituents, that basically we'll be using this project, especially the cost of the pickleball court, to see how we can do one in Landmark Village also. Because I had, I, you know, I, I know that think, well, you know, the wheels of government turn very slowly, and they can't understand why we're doing this order, but this, this action project came first, there's funding for this, we'll use this to help us move Landmark Village Pickleball Court along a lot faster.
Well, especially to the part, um, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I speak? Especially to the part where you're, you're saying a new pickleball court. That's what we're going to have to have out there, and it's just one single pickleball court, not two.
Yeah.
So, uh, it gives us some kind of a basis to start on.
Yeah, yeah, and I would admit, the bids came back a lot higher than what I was anticipating.
That's normal for nowadays, though.
It is, unfortunately.
It just is. So, the next one's the Landmark EMS headquarters, Ms. Griffin, is that correct?
Correct, the next bid that we're going to open is the Landmark EMS Headquarters, um, in the building we placed in Landmark, adjacent north of the Oak Street and Spring Street intersection.
While they're doing it, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say that the Landmark new fire truck was in the parade Saturday, it was really neat to, to see it, yep, yep.
It was in the, it was in the homecoming parade, too. Cause they tell me, they said, "Mr. Schuler, you could have rode on it," I said, "I didn't get no teleco- telephone call from you."
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify the record, on the bid tabulation sheet for the SGI Beach Park Facilities Upgrade, we have the four bids that the Board has approved to send on to, um, the engineer, those four bids being a bid from Geo Flora, a bid from BGN Contractors, and two bids from Premier Surface Solutions, but there's also listed on this tabulation sheet, North Florida Construction, Coastline Clearing and Development, and unknown, those are going to be toward the stormwater.
For the stormwater, yeah.
Just in case someone comes back and looks at the record and wants to know.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As long as we know what we're voting on, we're through. Alright, Ms. Griffin, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioners, the first bid that we are opening today for the Landmark EMS is going to be from, uh, Monolith Construction, and Monolith Construction is located in Port St. Joe, Florida. Um, and their base bid is, let's see here, total base bid, one million two hundred seventy-two thousand twenty-eight dollars, one million two hundred seventy-two thousand twenty-eight dollars. And we do have a six hundred thousand dollar Legislative Line Item Appropriation Grant to help to offset the cost of this project as well.
How much did you say?
One million two hundred seventy-two thousand twenty-eight dollars.
No, they're legislative appropriations.
Six hundred thousand.
What, is there a bid bond, Miss Erin?
There is a bid bond. Okay, this next one is from BGN Contractors, and BGN Contractors is located in Panama City, Florida. Um, their total base bid is one million five hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. Again, one million five hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. And there is a bid bond. Okay, this next bid is, uh, from Oliver Sperry Renovation, and Oliver Sperry is located in Tallahassee, Florida. Total base bid, one million ninety-seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars. And there is a bid bond included. And that amount again is one million ninety-seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars.
Alright, is this also being turned over to Dewberry, or how's this?
It is.
Alright. Alright. Pleasure to the Board.
I mean, is that all the bids?
Just those three, yeah.
I make a motion that when we turn this over to the committee and come back with a recommendation on this, and at the same time, I do want to say thank you to the Board members for supporting this, because this is very, very important. It's one of the things I can't blame back for many years far, and we're finally getting to see it, and it's going to, you can see the difference that, once we get this done, and the people out there in that area is ecstatic over having a new fire truck, you know, fire department maybe coming up online before too long, and then having this, so it's a good thing, it's a good thing. Thank y'all Commissioners for supporting it.
Alright, we have a, uh, Commissioner Sanders made the motion to approve, Commissioner Amerson has seconded that motion, any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Alright, Commissioners, the next item that we're going to open today is for the St. George Island Stormwater Drainage Improvements. Now, this project has been a long time coming, um, we are really excited to, to start this one, and it's through the, uh, being funded through the Restore Program. And the improvements include, but are not limited to, the addition of new stormwater pipes, stormwater structures, um, construction of new stor- a new stormwater pond, um, the improvements are located on St. George Island, and will also include a lot of resurfacing within the Commercial District of St. George Island from third to third, primarily due to those streets being actually torn up by the stormwater project. So, let's, um, and at this one, we actually had, um, three contact, contractors attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting. Um, and it looks like we have, um, only two bidders today. And I'm not going to read out the bid alternates, because there are eight of them.
Yeah.
Let's see, just throw them in the face. Okay, this first one is from North Florida Construction Incorporated, and they are from Clarksville, Florida. Again, North Florida Construction Incorporated in Clarksville, Florida. Uh, the total base bid is three million fifty-nine thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Again, three million fifty-nine thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. And there is a bid bond included. Uh, the second bid is coming from Coastline Clearing and Development LLC, located in East Point. Coastline Clearing and Development, located in East Point. And the total base bid is three million one hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Again, three million one hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Is there a bond over there?
I am looking for it right now. We may have to get the engineers to actually follow up on this one, if it's not included.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman Walsh is doing that, I would like to say, I, I'm, I'm really enjoying, it seems like, I don't know if it's just me, it seems like we're getting a lot more local bids now, I like that, I think that's, that's great.
Well, I thought that's a direct response, Commissioner Walsh is looking to the fact that we come up with a system that actually alerts local people, if they will sign up on that sheet, you know, with their information, when we put something online, it's going to this, instead of waiting to see if it's in the paper.
That works very well, I mean, and every day I still get new people wanting to sign up for it, so that's working, really, really good.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson, to turn this over to Dewberry for recommendation and review, uh, or review and recommendation, uh, any discussion before we vote? I would like to say thank you not only to the guys and ladies that are sitting here this morning, but commi- other Commissioners I've served with over the five and a half years that we've been trying to get this project completed. It has been a long road, I won't recount all of it, uh, but, uh, I think it's going to be a really big deal, I know it is, in my district, especially in the Business District on St. George Island. So, uh, hopefully this will be a good start of other things we can do to help alleviate stormwater, because it's a real problem. Thank you Commissioners, I do appreciate your support.
I would think when you first offered it back, a while back.
Yeah, so, so we talked about it, we talked about it, you took four years off, and you come back, and we're still not done with it. There you go, that'll work.
The wheels of government. The wheels of government.
Well, the other thing I'll say before we vote is, this is being funded with Restore, it's with the BP oil spill money, so it's not costing our taxpayers anything in the ad valorem taxes at all.
That's very good, we, we can do something like that.
Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Alright, Ms. Griffin.
Alright, Commissioners, uh, first action item, the Florida Department of Transportation has awarded Franklin County a forty-six thousand dollar design grant for the Otter Slide Sidewalk Project. This agreement will fund the survey, design permitting, construction plans, and bid documents for point eight-four miles of five-foot wide ADA compliant sidewalk along the west side of Otter Slide Road and north side of Avenue A. Board action to approve and authorize the Chairman to sign the attached FDOT agreement and resolution of authorization.
So move with comment.
Alright, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz, any discussion?
Uh, just as you were saying a while ago, Mr. Chairman, the wheels of government turn slow, this is one of the things I was passionate about when I first became elected four years ago, and so to see it come to fruition is great, it's still slated to actually be built twenty twenty-seven, but it's good to see some progress. And I want to thank my fellow Commissioners, uh, here and before, that, that helped vote this in, so thank you, I can't wait to see it done.
Alright, anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five oh vote. Ms. Erin, before you go on, which ones were the additions, so I can make sure we call for it?
Oh, okay, um, eleven, eleven, twelve.
Okay, you're good, go ahead, I just want to make sure-
Mr. Chairman, before I proceed, I've got a quick question, though, I do, though, I know we've got the grant cycle coming up for some new sidewalk, or for the-
Correct.
Okay, so I want to add-
Transportation alternatives is opening up.
Yes, I want to add Carabel, because we know I've been trying to get one in Carabel as well, on River Road, so I'd like to try to discuss that, and whenever that comes up,
Okay.
Call me, I want to be able to get Carabel back in the mix on that, thanks Chairman.
And what we may want to do too, is just focus on design, because transportation alternatives, you know, they sent out the solicitation, and then we tried a couple of years to actually fund the St. George Island Multi-Use Path, and then when it came down to it, you know, they actually didn't have that much money available for the entire district, so, um-
I know, we, we rated them from one to three, and, uh, but I just want to throw it back in there.
Oh, yes.
Just to ask, if they, they could say no, you know, but I just want to make sure.
And one thing, you, you said in the Carabel area, you're talking from like the park, I mean, to the beach park, to Carabel Bridge or something?
No, I already tried that, but there's residents that don't want that, plus they're doing that sunshine or sun, rain, sun trail.
They don't get a fair point over there.
Yeah, so they're getting trail there, but I was looking at, uh, and the city, of course, has sidewalks. I was thinking more like on River Road, because there's a lot of people that will commute from their home to the church, uh, to the Carabel Christian Center, and there's a lot of foot traffic and bicycle traffic, so out of all the areas in Carabel, that's the only place that I could think of that didn't have a sidewalk that probably needed one. So, um, so that's one I want to add to, and that's, I guess the rest of the Commissioners that may not be aware, that's how I got this Otter Slide Road sidewalk, is through that grant, it's FDOT funded, as the Chairman, uh, stated, it's not taxpayer money, I mean, it technically is taxpayer money, but it's not our ad valorem money. So, if you want a sidewalk in your district, this is that grant program that'll help you get that, so if you've got one in mind, but anyway, that's, I just want to make sure we, we include Carabel on the next go-round.
Let, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm, good.
Um, we're having a problem out there at Landmark, um, the apartments along the county roads, they've got sidewalks, but half the ownership is, is the county, and the other half is the property owner. And the trees are uprooting the, the sidewalk now. I was thinking more of a community block grant, rather than something like a, but we need sidewalks out there, too. So we need, we'll need to make sure we put references in there, too.
Is, is that in the area that Sun Trail's going to come through, Commissioner?
No, this is north, uh, yeah, north, that between there and Oak Street.
Okay.
So, we, and we've got a, um, sidewalk all down Oak Street, for the whole length of the village, and it was almost the whole length of Landmark, just about it, but anyway.
And that is something that we're starting to see with a lot of the projects, just because construction costs have gone so high recent, in recent years, um, that actually a lot of the projects are being- projects are being broken down into design, and then several, several years later, they will actually fund construction. So instead of it being kind of a packaged deal, now it's taking a little bit longer for a community to actually see the construction.
And I can tell you, I don't like those phased-in projects.
Yes.
Because I like it to be done all at one time and get over with it, you know? That's not the way that they want it.
Well, there's no way, there's no way they're doing it cheaper by not pha- by phasing it in.
Yeah, correct.
There's no way it's coming up cheaper.
There's no way.
They have budgeted, but there's no way it's cheaper because it's increasing every time.
Well, and you look at County Road Sixty-Seventh is a good example of that. You've got four phases of it, okay? So every phase, you're not getting a contractor that's doing the whole thing. It's just phases. So first of all, you've got mobilization fees. So, and I mean, they eat you up right there, so it is a, I don't, I'm like, Mr. Chairman, I don't see where it's any cheaper doing it in a phase. They just don't want to turn a loose that money.
They like that mobilization fee.
Budgetary concerns. Yeah, it does.
We haven't got room in our budget to phase two this year. We'll kick it to next year.
That's right. Give us a whittle room. Ms. Erin, I'm sorry. Go ahead. We took over your meeting.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number two. At the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, the board approved a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protections Beach Management Division for the design and permitting phase of the Alligator Point Beach Nurishment Project. As stated during the August twenty-twenty-one meeting, the board is not obligated to proceed with construction, only completion of the scope approved by FDEP for the grant award agreement. The original construction cost estimate of ten million dollars was mentioned in twenty-twenty-one for approximately one-point-three miles of shoreline. The approved task order with MRD Associates is fully funded by the FDEP grant and will include the necessary surveys, design, true cost estimates based on material quantities and issuance of the regulatory permits for the beach nourishment project should the community and board ever decide to move forward. The permitting process is lengthy with beach re-nourishment projects, and the attached grant award agreement extension will extend the grant through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, which will allow for sufficient time for the issuance of the permits. Once issued, the permit will be valid for a period of ten years. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached amendment, which will grant the extension. So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second it with a comment.
Say goodbye Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner, go ahead.
Okay. Erin, isn't this some of the projects that when I first came on board, they didn't really want it down there or...?
Correct. The public does not support the project. However, we did already receive the FDEP grant award agreement. And one thing to note, since the permits will be valid for a period of ten years, it's actually something where, let's say, a major hurric- a major hurricane or natural disaster makes landfall and actually opinions change, or all of a sudden the community decides that they would like to proceed with the beach re-nourishment.
You're going to have the permit.
And also, this is a chance for the county to actually have firm, firm construction costs, so, you know.
This is basically for the permit, then?
It is, correct.
And if we had to have it, if a storm hits, I mean, because right now the roads hold up good.
Correct.
You know, where we always had problems, now we've got problems toward the marina down there. So, okay, I don't have no problem doing it then.
Any other discussion, Commissioners?
I just got a question, Ms. Chairman. Why do the residents not want beach re-nourishment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please, I'm just trying to understand that one.
I don't know why now, but I knew back then, a lot of the, some of the residents that's on the Gulf side down at Alligator Point, they have, they have their own beach, some of it.
They still was, or is that old?
They still have some of their own beaches, and they don't really want to have anything like that. They're, they're still not in that area that we had real extreme damage, you know? But that's the reason why they, you know, because they do have a right to the beach, they feel, so, and, and they did not, when I came on board, they told me, that was one of the first thing they told me, we do not want beach re-nourishment down here.
And there was also Commissioner at the time, or the Commission at the time, there were some Commissioners that wanted to make sure that if we did any beach re-nourishment, they wanted all the residents of Alligator Point to pay for it. That was the bigger reason that I think they really didn't want it because they were...
I was just trying to get some Israel.
Yeah, there would actually be some maintenance costs for the artificial beach, you know? For one, if there's a natural disaster and it's declared and the beach actually washes away, then you can actually get FEMA assistance to put the artificial beach back. However, if it's just an unnamed storm that comes through a certain tide going a particular direction, you lose a bunch of sand, there's actually no mechanism to actually put the beach back.
Right.
So unless it's actually a declared disaster, you have to have a mechanism in place to actually maintain that beach.
Right.
So that's where the cost of maintenance would kind of come into play.
But, but if we had a beach, and I'm just talking half the, we had a beach anywhere in the county that was a re-nourishment project, we have a line and we can prove from the permits and design where we had beach at. Yeah, you might not get it during a name storm, but it's not a matter of if, it's when around here.
Yeah.
When we do get a name storm, we can put back everything we proved we had, can we? Isn't that the way it kind of works? The problem we have now is without, without re-nourishment, that's where they find us on putting stuff back because it's hard to prove what was there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that, anyway, just talking to it.
And the public, it's sometimes too, they also don't like the, the thought of, there's something called an erosion control line, which will actually move around, you know, with the creation of an artificial beach.
Yes.
So that may in turn end up with more public space in front of private property owners than what they had previously. So that's, that's, it's one of those really polarizing topics that usually it takes a natural disaster of a certain scale before there's overwhelming support for something like that.
Yeah, and Alligator Point's different than anywhere else I've ever known. The flows are different, you know, east to west, and I mean, when you look at Saint Theresa, you almost got that whole point, the Fitz Preserve, almost all the way over to Saint Theresa now. You don't have that little strip in there going to close out the channel or the harbor for too long. So I'm hoping that that will take care of itself, and maybe the beach will build up where it needs to build up that naturally, you know, hopefully.
Any other discussion? We still need to vote, correct?
Correct. I don't have a vote.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That is five-o unanimous. Ms. Erin?
Okay, Commissioners, the next action item, Restore SGI Stormwater Improvement Construction Advertisement Bidding and Award Services, the Duberry Task Order. The planning and design work permitting and construction plans were completed for the SGI Stormwater Project back in twenty-twenty-two. From that point, the county had to amend the multi-year implementation plan to include the construction cost estimates, and the U.S. Treasury had to formally approve the plan before the county was allowed to submit the construction funding application. Just recently, the county received the construction grant award and opened the construction bid responses earlier today. Duberry Engineers developed the plans over two years ago, and as that contract was solely for the design and permitting work, Duberry has assisted the county in updating the construction bid specifications and advertisements, issuing the addendums, hosting the mandatory pre-bid meetings, answering questions from bidders, and will now review the construction bids. As all of these services are necessary for the project, they are, however, not covered by either Restore Grant, either the design or construction grant. Board action to approve the attached five-thousand-dollar task order with Duberry Engineers for the bidding and contract award services mentioned above to be paid by the board's professional services line item.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number five.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I was about to say, did we skip three?
Oh, I did. Sorry. I was trying to cruise quickly for you all.
Good call because I didn't even notice it.
Yeah, I was going to add something.
Okay. Action item number three. At the last meeting, the board opened responses to the RFQ for professional engineering and construction oversight services for the Restore SGI Stormwater Improvement Construction Project and released the responses to the Ranking Committee for Review and Recommendation. There were two respondents to the RFQ, AECOM and Southeastern Consulting Engineers. The committee has reviewed and scored the responses and recommends award to the highest-ranked respondent, Southeastern Consulting Engineers. Board action to issue the notice of intent to award to Southeastern Consulting Engineers and authorize staff to begin contract negotiations. So move. Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Ward. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is a five-o vote.
All right, Commissioners, now, action item number five. Okay. Staff has requested the attached two task orders from the county's Restore Consultant Langton and Associates. Once the latest amendment, which included the transfer station as a project, to the multi-year implementation plan, was accepted by Treasury, the county, the county has now approved to submit a grant application for the project. The attached hourly task order number one to not exceed seven thousand twenty dollars, Langton will assist in the development and submission of the construction grant application for the landfill transfer station. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order for the transfer station project.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crean.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, and we have a lot of Restore action items today. Now that the over four-million-dollar SGI Stormwater Project is moving to the construction phase, the attached hourly to not exceed twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-six-dollar task order number three with Restore Consultant Langton and Associates will assist the county with the Treasury compliance reviews, federal reporting requirements, and the federal grant award closeout requirements. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order for the SGI Stormwater Project. So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crean. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five-o.
Okay, next action item number six. In October, the county's SGI multi-use resurfacing project was approved as a type-one categorical exclusion. A type-one categorical exclusion is granted after a long list of NIPA, National Environmental Policy Act documentation, is submitted for review, and a project is then determined unlikely to have a significant and/or negative impact on the environment. This approval allows the county to move forward without further environmental assessments or impact statements. Franklin County follows the Consultants' Competitive Negotiate- Negotiation Act in selecting engineering firms for design improvements, and the ongoing county engineering contract with Duberry in Florida statute two-eighty-seven-point-zero-five-five allows for the county to negotiate with the contracted engineer for this project. County staff have negotiated with county engineers Duberry for the design, surveying, development of construction bid specs, and construction inspection for this project, and recommends approval of the attached task order in the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order with Duberry Engineers for the Saint George Island Multi-Use Path Project, and that will be resurfacing from Third Street West to Third Street East. So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amison. Discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number seven. The widening and resurfacing of Hickory Dip Road is currently underway. Two existing driveways will require additional linear footage of pipe and couplings to remain the same width. FDOT does not have additional funds to fund the additional materials and labor. However, Commissioner Jones would like for the driveways impacted by the project to be restored. The attached change order number one from Contractor Pigott Asphalt in the amount of five thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents will cover the cost of the additional pipe and couplers, and will keep the driveways at the existing width on the right-of-way. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached change order number one with the additional cost being paid by District One's paving funds. So move. Question?
All right. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crean, second by Commissioner Sanders. Go ahead, Commissioner Crean.
As of right now with this project, are there only just two roads that need this? Or would it be more additional later on?
There's actually only two that are impacted.
Yeah. Yeah, basically, they installed two culvert pipes. They were too short. They cut them too short. But they'd already installed them when they were found that way. So they had to remove them and replace them with two different pipes. Yeah.
And we typically try to, to ensure that when the county's projects are accomplished that we don't change existing conditions.
That's right. That's right. Any other discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, action item number eight. Attached is the fourth and final change order for Contractor Robertson-Roberts for the CR-67 Phase Two Widening and Resurfacing Project. Originally, Commissioner Sanders had pledged up to ninety-five thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents to fund the additional cost of the one foot of paved shoulders for this roadway section when the base bid values came back more than anticipated and more than the grant award. With the cost reduction of change order number one and this change order number four with the final reconciliation of quantities, which is a reduction of forty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-three cents, the final contract price will be one million seven hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. The final contribution from District Two's paving funds will be twenty-six thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached final change order number four for the CR-67 Phase Two project. So move. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I got a question, Erin. You know, we see a lot of projects that are constantly getting change orders, and I know things come up. I know that prices change. I know any kind of, you know, weather happens. Any kind of variable can happen. Is there a set limit on how many change orders that we can receive for a project?
There is no limit. However, you know, of course it would be...
This is number four.
Yes, it is number four. The first one was a reduction due to some quantity adjustments, and this, this one, this number four is also pretty common. You will typically see that with paving projects where there will be a final reconciliation of values. But with this project, there were actually two no-cost time extensions that were granted as well. And one was from the striping mishap, and the other one, I believe, was from some weather days.
I just think sometimes they do the change order, change order, change order, just to prolong, try to...
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Get more money or whatever case, but anyway.
I was going to ask Commissioner Sanders, how do you get all your money back like that? I didn't get a key.
Would I tell you about my company Jesus meeting? That's honestly true.
Is it? Tom Schiller, can I bring her along?
What was your answer?
It'd have to be a public hearing to have two of you in the same spot at the same time.
But that's not to say that I can't talk with them at a given time without you there, Commissioner, I know.
I can see that. Two Commissioners that tend to come to Jesus meetings.
Sometimes I have to work on it.
That'd be a different kind of announcement. Any other discussion before we vote?
I'm going to leave this discussion where it's at, and we'll continue at the next board meeting when we have more time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, next action item number nine. At the last meeting, I mentioned updating the county's procurement policy to move some of the threshold values for multiple quotes and bids as the existing ten-thousand-dollar threshold is proven to be too low. It is difficult and slows progress for county departments and county projects to require multiple quotes for small jobs when there are a limited number of responsive bidders and the rising cost of materials. In order for the county to be able to quickly make necessary, necessary repairs, make small improvements or timely, replace broken or damaged equipment, the revision below is proposed. Also included in the revised policy are updates to some of the federal procurement provisions. The attached will change the formal bid solicitation threshold from twenty-five thousand to forty-thousand. Purchases of forty thousand dollars or more will have to be properly advertised and awarded at a public meeting. Tiered purchases from $25,000 to $40,000, which was previously 10 to 25, will require the informal solicitation of three quotes and approval by the county coordinator or fiscal manager. An excerpt of the purchasing categories and thresholds is pasted below. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the updated county procurement policy. And I will say, in the past, $10,000 was sufficient for actually being able to replace an AC unit or making plumbing repairs. But that has not been the case recently, and it's been very difficult to push things along or even get bidders to respond to us as well.
Miss Aaron, most of these things, these are things we're paying for anyway, correct?
Correct. Correct. These small nominal values are something that's, you know, kind of like as they come up, have issues. Or repairing ballfield fencing, you know, things of that nature. I mean, it's just almost impossible to move forward with the $10,000 threshold.
Well, you don't want everything to have to be bid out because then you never get it done. Especially when it's something really small.
Yeah, it do I.
Because we've done that before. We put out bids and there were no respondents. Because it's not a big amount of money. So we do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crew. I would like to ask a question and discussion, Miss Aaron. Is there a reason why we chose 40 instead of 50?
Just because it still conceptually sounds like a lot.
Forty-nine, ninety-nine.
Not when you start-
Like $10 versus $9.99.
I just thought she put the $15,000 gap in it like she did with the 10 to 25.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I was just asking.
Yeah, conceptually, it still felt like a big stretch.
All the ones in the middle still require three quotes.
Correct.
You know what I mean? Okay.
In the back of my day, a loaf of bread was only a quarter.
There you go. All right. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number 10. Ranking Grand Administration RFP respondents. At the October 1st meeting, the board opened responses to the RFP for Grand Administration services. These services include general program assistance with applications and financial reporting for certain programs such as the American Rescue Plan, HMGP projects, and legislative line item appropriation requests. There were three respondents to this RFP, Answer Advisory, The Management Experts, and Metric Consulting. The ranking review committee recommends issuance of a notice of award to the highest-ranked firm, The Management Experts. Board action to issue a notice of intent to award to The Management Experts and authorize staff to begin contract negotiations.
Pleasure to the board.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number 11. Now, this one I did actually, this one included the updated quote from People South, which basically, you know, the item was still scheduled, but it, just some of the information has changed. Attached is a $121,438.3 quote from AgPro Equipment for a new John Deere 5120M utility tractor with grapple and cage based on Sourcewell contract pricing. Included on the quote is a $20,000 trade-in for the old John Deere 5625 tractor at the airport. To date, the county has received financing quotes direct from John Deere and also from leasing to of Tampa. And now People South has responded as well. We do have one more that I'm waiting to receive back from Centennial Bank. And actually thus far, People South responded with the best rate to date, a 5.25% fix for 36 months. So I do have a revised action item B. Action item A, board action to approve the purchase of the new tractor and authorize the trade-in slash removal of the old John Deere 5625 from county inventory.
Do we need to do this separately, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
All right.
Erin, it says that you're still awaiting from Centennial Bank, but if we approve this, this will go, we'll send the credit application to People South?
It's actually, if you follow, I was hoping I had worded that correctly, and confirmation that People South has the best rate. So it was contingent upon review with attorney Michael Schuler and-
So which rate was the Centennial rate, the 5.95?
Centennial has not responded yet.
And that's what my question was. Do we need to, I mean, I don't want to delay, but should we wait if they get a better rate? Or can we do a contingent if they have a better rate? Then that's something we'll address at the next board meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So these need to be, these motions need to be contingent?
Yes.
On the finance?
Actually, the, you know, the approval to actually purchase and do the trade-in, that one is actually fine. It's its own separate motion. So you all can go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay.
The second action item would be board action to approve the chairman signing the credit application with People South Bank and the finance package once reviewed by attorney Schuler
I got you.
and confirmation that People South has the best rate. So if not, I will come back at the next meeting and say, surprised it was Centennial.
Erin, I got a question.
Okay.
So our last meeting, we approved updating a thousand for the same tractor, correct? So there was an increase of thirty-two thousand.
There was. Actually, they wanted the cage and the grapple attachment as well.
Different attachment.
I didn't realize that Steve had brought that up at the last meeting.
I did.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's for the increase.
Okay, okay, okay. It's the same tractor, yes. Yes, yeah.
That, that's my question I had. You know, I know it probably was more money because it was a hundred thousand, a hundred and eight, somewhere along the way. Yeah, and then, but you got a $20,000 trade-in on it. You're telling me that tractor before that was 141,000 something?
Actually, the tractor purchase, 121, is less than $20,000. The 121- Yeah, so we will be financing the, roughly about $100,000.
Okay, okay. That's what we need to know because I don't have a problem with 100,000.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin, what about the lease option? Did we look into that? I've kind of, that was a couple of weeks ago and I kind of lost track with it.
Well, actually, they run these as lease-purchase options, basically. So they actually amortize down to where at the end of the term, you can purchase the tractor for a dollar. So that's the John Deere proposal.
So that's what we're doing is what you're saying?
Basically, yeah.
Does that include scheduled maintenance? Did anybody look into that or is this?
The scheduled maintenance should be relatively low because of it being a new tractor. I didn't look into the-
So I asked Steve to look into it. I don't, he got back to you not about the opportunity.
Yeah, I think Matthew Cobb's response said something like, you know, the maintenance would be low because it's a new tractor, and then at the end of the term, you would buy the tractor for a dollar. So that's-
For that price, they ought to give you zero percent interest.
Not today.
That's the lender. That's not John Deere.
And the other thing you wanted Commissioner Amerson was to- Steve was supposed to, Mr. Kirshenbaum was supposed to look into make sure maintenance would be here. They would travel here to maintain the tractor. We would have to drag it all the way up to Tallahassee. So he was, so we were ready to make the decisions. I fear a lot of questions.
Well, my thing too is-
We are ready to purchase the tractor, but I guess with the financing shakeout is the-
And any tractors should have a warranty anyway. Any new piece of equipment, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's actually what we see with the same, the rolling lease purchase agreement at their road department with their dump trucks. You know, we basically have no maintenance expenses because the dump trucks are changing hands every 18 months.
Okay.
So even with a 36-month lease, I mean, the warranty will likely cover any sort of maintenance issue.
Y'all gotta ask this question. We pretty much through the years used beard equipment, John Deere, out of Panama City. I wanted to know why had, were they even considered? Or why was it straight out of Tallahassee AgPro?
Now, they are contract pricing, so the pricing's not going to vary.
It would be the same.
It would be the same. But, you know, we've used Matthew Cobb out of AgPro for, you know, a long while as well, so.
I know that, but I'm just-
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sanders, I think also it might have been actually having the equipment. I think there was some discussion about inventory with dealers as well.
That could be possible.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that is. I'm just kind of pulling that from some of the discussions we had.
Yeah, I think he does have this one actually up there on site.
On the dot.
Erin, refresh my memory. This coming out of airport funds?
It is.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So what's the pleasure of the board? Action item A.
So move.
Second. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson. Second by Commissioner Crew. To purchase the new tractor and authorize the trade-in of the old John Deere 5625 from county inventory. Any discussion before we vote additionally?
Just one response. Before you get rid of the John Deere, I want somebody to take down the hours on that piece of equipment and write it down on the number of hours it's on it.
All right. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. What's the pleasure of the board with action item B?
So move.
All right. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. This motion is to approve the signature on the credit application with People South and finance package after attorney Schuler has reviewed it and after it has been confirmed that People South has the best rate on this law we're doing. Any additional discussion before we vote?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yes.
If I review this documentation and the maintenance is not provided to be done in Apalachicola where the tractor is located, and if the maintenance itself is not part of the lease agreement, do I bring this back to you? Or are you okay with the maintenance being done somewhere else?
No, I think we need to know for sure, so please bring it back to us if that's okay.
Very good. Thank you for those-
Unless somebody on the board disagrees with that.
No.
That's what I'm hearing from the board. I was going to make sure I'm clear.
You're reading it right.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
Yep. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number 12. Attached are resolutions for the adoption of unanticipated revenues as part of the end of the fiscal year bookkeeping. These funds were not included in your originally adopted 2023-2024 budget because at the time of budget adoption, they were unanticipated. Florida statute 129 allows the county 60 days after the end of a fiscal year to incorporate unanticipated revenues into the prior year's budget. The first resolution is for $25,793 in state grant revenues received for the Old Ferry Dock Boat Ramp Construction Project. The second resolution is for $131,920 in federal funds received from the LATCF program. The third resolution is for $200,000 in state grant revenues received for the Bruman Park Fruit App Project. The fourth resolution is for $73,422 in contributions and donations received for the replacement of the theater seats at Chapman Auditorium. The fifth resolution is for $418,363 in state grant funds received as part of the legislative appropriation request for the Landarch St. James Volunteer Fire Truck. The sixth resolution is for $40,565 in federal grant revenues received for the countywide Dune Restoration Restore Project. Board action to adopt the attached budget resolutions.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve that adoption by Commissioner Ward. Second from Commissioner Amerson. Anyone have any questions, concerns, or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number 13. At 9:00 AM on November 16th, the morning of the Forgotten Coast Freedom Festival at the county airport in Apalachicola, the county will hold a surplus equipment auction. The airport and county road department have sent their lists of equipment below to be sent to the auction. The auctioneer's flyer is also pasted below as well as what was approved at the last meeting for the landfill and Parks and Recreation Department. So for the airport and road department items, you will see on there the items for auction, the corresponding department, serial numbers or VIN or the property tag numbers. I will go back and actually add the serial numbers or VIN numbers for some of the available airport equipment for the board record after the fact because I just received the final list from the auctioneer, which actually had that information. So I do have the general description of the items there, but will later add the other information. Board action to approve sending the items above to auction and the subsequent removal from county inventory once sold.
Mr. Chairman, I will approve with question.
Okay. We do have an approval of this, of these items being sent to auction by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
I see here that the, you're able to, the individual that may want to bid on these items can go online and view these items? Is that correct?
They are, they are supposed to be able to do that. I don't think he's got the link live yet. But yes, that will be the case.
Second question is, people can go to the airport before this and get a, be able to view the vehicles in person or the equipment in person?
Yep.
Is there somebody they need to contact before they go out there? Or is there something that, can they just go?
Actually, Scott Kelly.
Okay.
Yeah, Scott Kelly out there at the airport. You know, he can actually arrange it. And actually, if they want to, you know, they're welcome to send us an email or contact us, and we'll be glad to put them in touch with Scott.
Okay, I didn't know if there was like a day. Okay, you can go on this day to the airport to view these items before the auction.
He's out there every day, Monday through Friday.
And this equipment's already out there?
They are. They are already staging.
All right. All right, thank you.
Any additional discussion before we vote? I just want to know, I need some more clarification. What about this old root rate? That's the thing, old root rate.
Mr. Chairman, there's quite a bit of really old equipment out there.
I got to thinking, and not to go back. I know we've already made a motion and vote on it, but should we have gone for public comments on this late update to the, to the agenda item for the airport or for the tractor?
No, that's not a late item. The next one-
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that would have been-
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, okay.
No.
Cool. Thank you.
I think that's what you told me, right? The last three?
Correct, yeah. Okay. The other one was previously scheduled.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, Miss Erin, before you proceed with these three, one of them is a final cost update to TDC Public Safety and Services.
Yep.
For St. George Island Volunteer Fire Department ATV and Medical Sled. The other one is St. George Island Fishing Pier Complete Closure for Repair.
Yep.
And the other one is updates to personnel rules. Before we address any of these three items, is there anyone in the public that would wish to comment on these? We're going to take a public comment at this time. I'm just going to do public comment for all of them, then we'll proceed. What about online, Mr. Ward?
The chairman has called for anybody attending via Zoom. If you'd like to comment on the last three items of Mrs. Griffith's report, item 14, 15, and 16, now would be the time to do so. Please indicate by raising your hand on your device. Selecting the hand raised featuring your device. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
With none online and seeing none in the room, Ms. Griffin, please proceed with the three items.
Okay, action item number 14, which was a late add item in August of 2023. The SGI Volunteer Fire Department had requested assistance from the TDC to purchase a beach-compatible ATV and medical sled. Once the TDC spending plan was formally amended in February to include the 10% Public Safety Services expenditures, the BOCC and TDC board approved the request. In the attached reimbursement request, the actual cost of the beach-compatible ATV and medical sled was $29,245.44 instead of the 2023 cost estimate of $25,618.90. Board action to approve reimbursement to the Volunteer Fire Department for the actual cost of $29,245.44.
Pleasure to the board.
So move.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Ward. Second from Commissioner Crew. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Please proceed.
Okay Commissioners, next item is a late add item for the St. George Island Fishing Pier. Late yesterday, the county received notice that the special order lumber for the fishing pier repair will arrive this week and the contractor will begin on-site, starting demolition of the wooden section of the pier. As the pier will be completely inaccessible and dangerous during this repair, the area should be closed to all traffic. Vehicular access has been restricted already due to the hurricane damage to the access road. The contractor estimates, estimates that it will take approximately three weeks to demo and replace the decking on the fishing pier. Board action to completely close the SGI Fishing Pier and Access Road area to vehicular and foot traffic for three weeks beginning tomorrow, November sixth through November twenty-seventh. And I do want to add another note on that. You know, it, we've received some questions as far as, you know, when will the road be opened up again? And essentially we are waiting for one more site visit from FEMA. Once they actually come and take, you know, their additional measurements or anything else they would like to look at, we can then actually get the county road department to go out there and actually get that road to a usable state. It won't be pretty, but it will actually, you know, serve its purpose.
When is that supposed to take place, Miss Erin? Do we know yet?
We don't have a date yet, but from what I understand, it'll probably be within the next month or so. But just want, board action to get that completely closed off and we will try to get emergency management and one of their warning signs relocated there to the ax, to the entrance to the fishing pier area to actually inform the public that the pier is closed.
Okay.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second from Commissioner Amerson. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That is five oh.
Okay Commissioners, the next is a late add informational item. The county's personnel rules have not been updated since two thousand and twelve. And in addition to changes due to wage and hour laws, various policy changes enacted by the B O C C will also need to be incorporated. And that would be things such as funeral leave for additional family members, which at one point the board actually authorized funeral leave for grandparents, which were not originally included. Also would be the premium pay for parks personnel during the busy summer season. There's a couple of policies that we've enacted independently of actually updating the entire rules. The county's labor attorney will also review the current policy and the draft update and I hope to have a working draft back to you all by the next commission meeting. And that's an informational item. And then also, one other item to note, the lease for Sylvester Williams Park. We actually received that back from the city of Apalachicola last Thursday. The chairman signed on Friday.
Yes.
The clerk also signed on Friday and we will get a, execute a copy to Attorney Schuler.
Don't worry, we're good.
Yeah. That's just some board informational updates for you all.
Okay, any questions for Miss Griffith before, before we proceed?
Mister Chairman, I do. Uh, Miss Griffith, uh, I'm gonna beat that dead horse.
While, um, while the clerk, there's a check run she's gonna tell you about in a minute. Commissioner Kroom, since we now have that lease in hand, I will then inform Mister Ward at Duke Energy about that lighting project you wanted approved there for Sylvester Williams.
Yes.
Okay, just want to let you know that. That's what I was waiting for, to sign lease before I approved the Duke lighting package that he sent you, okay?
Yes.
Miss Griffin, uh, the, the Donnie Wilson part, we gonna do that end of this month? Is that my understanding as far as the batting cages and getting the quotes out or getting bids out?
Yes, we are actually opening bids for that, I believe, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we'll be able to start both of those batting cages and then likely I'll.
That's what I got in trouble about the other day, remember?
The batting cages?
Let, let, let me just ask this.
At Kendrick Pond.
And just help me out through the timeframe with this. Once we go out for these bids, how many days does that have to be advertised?
We typically advertise for about thirty days because that'll give us time to answer questions. You know, that'll allow for time for response as well. Yeah, so we've already advertised, so we're, we're actually opening bids at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was getting at because my calendar's starting to run out.
Oh, okay, okay.
If it's gonna be another thirty days, we're gonna be in January, ball will start right there at the end of March. Well, it'll already be, you know, they're already utilizing the batting cages.
Yes.
Just to say, me and Commissioner Sanders, a lot of phone calls.
Yeah.
We need to get that done as quick.
Glad we're doing it.
They're calling, they're baseball calls.
Need to make sure we get that in a timely fashion, that way we don't hold up any of the.
Hold up the kid, we don't want to hold up your kid.
Mamas can get mad.
Any other questions or concerns from Miss Griffin? Mister Row?
All right Commissioners, so we're back to the original agenda packet, page twenty-six. Over the last few months, Commissioner Amerson, and I did leave out Chairman Jones, he also met with some of these same people we're referring to, met with a few companies that are interested in locating the operations at the airport and also with Haney, Haney representative who would like to open their first satellite location at the county's airport. These scenarios would result in economic development and job creation for the county. A common request from Haney and some of these companies is the use of the hangar now occupied by Mister Randall Terry. Mister Terry is in the middle of the current lease and has a first right of refusal for lease extension. Commissioner Amerson and Mister Terry discuss the future use of his hangar, of that hangar. After a few meetings, Mister Terry informed Commissioner Amerson that he would accept a fifty thousand dollar buyout of this current lease. Initially Commissioners, this may seem like an expensive proposition, however, the availability of that hangar could be the factor that would encourage a company to locate at the airport and provide economic and job opportunities for the county. Commissioner Amerson has some additional comments and I'll be action board. There'll be discussion, I'll show up to Commissioner Amerson's comments and action to authorize Attorney Schuler to create an amendment to Mister Terry's lease with that fifty thousand dollar buyout. Sir.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, just to go back on what Michael said, actually what we've got, we've got a firm commitment from Haney. All right, I went out there with Mister David from Haney and Mister George Wilkerson, who is now the, the chairman of the airport board. Anyway, we went out, we looked at potential sites way back for classroom. The only other option, and we spoke with Andrew from Centric was there, and he graciously offered the overhead space and the Randolph hangar, which is, it's not that big of a space to begin with. The only problem there is, is that we would have to then put a bunch of money in to make it eighty-eight cents. So basically, we've got a firm commitment from, from Haney. We went, visited with Mister Randall Terry and at first, I'm gonna be honest with you all, I didn't like the idea of, of having to buy someone out of our property, so to speak. But after I went and looked at the hangar and seen what he has put into it, I mean, he's done a lot of work out there. He's got a lot of money invested in that hangar. What's appealing about this particular hangar is, is a gentleman from, from Haney's eyes lit up because they've already got, I mean, it's already got wall petitions in there, everything is set up to basically hit the ground running. With that, keep in mind, we didn't go out and get a, a firm bid, but we're just guestimating, I guess. But you'd be looking at around fifty thousand dollars to just make that other hangar compliant, the, the overhead space. So really, I mean, it's a bitter pill to swallow, but the long game in that is that we're gonna recoup that money and possibly more money. You see what I'm saying? Mister Terry has a, uh, uh, the right of first refusal on the hangar. I mean, it's a very, you know, you're looking at, at the rate that he got that hangar, that was a gift. And we, in the future, we've got to start getting, you know, we, we gotta start getting the fair market value for these hangars out there. It's the people's hangars. That's the only way I can see this working with Haney. But there again, you know, I'm one of five. I've went out there and like I said, I've looked at what, what we got. I think it's a, it's a solid deal, but you guys will have to, y'all got any questions, please ask me.
I, I need, Mister Chairman, go ahead.
No, I'm done, go ahead.
So, so he said the middle of his lease, when is his, his, I guess, is Haney like wanting to come now? Like in other words, can we just let his lease run out?
There, uh, Haney wants to start in the fall of next year.
So, so we're gonna be before his lease runs out? Cause I was thinking we could let his lease run out and then give it to Haney without paying the fifty grand, but.
Well, you, he has to write the first refusal, so he can maintain it at, at the rate he has it right now.
Okay.
At a very small percentage, I think, increase in the contract. I'd have to go back and look at the details, but it's pennies, really. I mean, we'd be strung out for fifty years at the old, at this lease agreement that he's had with the county for X amount of years. You know, we're not, I'm not gonna go down that road.
Yeah.
But, uh, but, but going forward, that won't happen as long as I'm sitting here. But enough of that. But what I'm getting at is, is if we, if we want to bring Haney, and Haney is committed, they're coming. You know, we've already got the, uh, what's the, the Tango Flight Program and all that, which I'm not gonna go in that because I believe Mister Wilkerson's gonna be at the next meeting and wants to update the county commission about what's going on with the school, with the Tango Flight Programs and all that stuff. But, but Haney's there. They want to make Franklin County their first satellite campus. And, uh, and it's, it's, it would be a good deal, let's just put it that way.
Mister Chairman, I got another question, sorry. The fifty thousand, where would that money come from? Is that from the airport?
Airport.
Okay, airport budget? Okay.
Mister Chairman, a question.
One, one more quick thing and I'll let you have it. But, uh, but just to update y'all on that, a lot of this stuff was kind of contingent on whether or not Mister Terry sold his property because he's wanting to sell everything and go, he just, his business is still technically located here. He was kind of hesitant about even entering this negotiation because his house and all wasn't selling. He's sold everything over the last, since we met last, he's sold his house, he's sold everything. So now he's, he's, he's free and clear. So if we can come to an agreement, we can, uh, then go to Haney and say, hey, look, this is where you, we got it. They can start setting up, doing what they need to do. I believe they're, kind of their timeframe is possibly after the first year start if they can and then we got a clear space for them to go ahead and start getting prepared for that fall class. But, uh, but anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Ward, you asked two of my questions that I had. Attorney Schuler, I remember a couple of months ago, we had a discussion came up about this specific hangar. I think we was having issues getting hold of Mister Terry or something, do I remember that?
Yes.
I don't remember what that was.
It was about the fuse box.
Yeah, there's, yes, sir. I generally recall that, but I don't know how much discussion y'all want to have publicly about that. I mean, it sounds like there's been a negotiation that's been reached in principle, subject to the board's agreement to it. Now, we'll need some more detail in terms of, and you, you were just touching on this, Commissioner Amerson. Okay, we know the amount, but when? And I think you said first of the year he needs to be out of that building, is that my understanding?
Well, yeah, I mean, it was my understanding that he had no way, you know, he needed to sell his property, yada, 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 you know. We, we, I think all those milestones have been met, so to speak. So we should be able to move forward with this if we get approval here.
Okay. So. So is there a, a, a drop dead deadline where, where he must be out so that Haney can come in? Or do we even know that, the answer to that question yet?
Well, they're kind of, I guess, you was at the meeting, it was kind of, you know, they would work together kind of thing, nothing really concrete. But now since these other things have arose, we can go back and get those firmed up if we need to.
Yes, sir, I, I, I think that would be best for, clarity is better and, and I don't know about other people, but I work much better when I know I've got a hard and fast deadline that, you know, that is immutable, that's in stone, it can't be changed. So it motivates people to meet those benchmarks. So, so, is someone going to get me that information? Do I get that from Mister Terry or?
No, I'll, I'll get that.
You'll get that, okay.
So does, so does the board want to entertain this today contingent upon hearing back the date? Or let the date be worked out and just be informed about it, or how do you want to handle this?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of hoping that Commissioner Amerson might be able to flesh out a little bit, you know, sort of.
Cause I'm, I'm.
The soft deadline is January, but you know, it must be the first of March at, at the latest or something.
So what I was asking.
We don't have that, we don't have.
What I was asking for, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, bring it up at the next meeting.
So, Commissioner Sanders, what I was asking for today, if you guys agree to, if you guys authorize Attorney Schuler to proceed with creating this amendment, this agreement, we'll bring that back to you with all this information in it.
So we're just agreeing in principle?
Yeah, we're not.
Yes, yes, I, I, yeah, I didn't, you know, I, I, I don't have the authority to, to direct Attorney Schuler to come up with this agreement and then present it to you, you know? So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the board is, is say, okay, let, let's see what amendment, what, what the agreement looks like.
So, so we still need to take a vote today to agree to this buyout, is what you're saying?
To at least authorize him to come up with the agreement for the buyout and then you guys decide when he brings it back to you on the agreement itself, which will have more, all the details of the, of the buyout.
Commissioner, just one question, not, not that I mean to die. Is there a current aircraft hanging?
Yes, he had two, actually.
Yes. If I may, Commissioner Kroom? So, yeah, so that's one of the things I have to work out with Mister Terry is to get with Andrew and/or Mister Kirshenbaum to find one of the hangars to put his plane in, either an FBO hangar or if we have a free T hangar that his plane could fit in there. But again, I didn't want to go down that path until you guys kind of give me a sense. This is something you, you guys like and you authorize Attorney Schuler to come up with an agreement.
Did you mean to use the word empty? You said free.
Yeah, I meant empty.
Right, right.
I'll just make sure what we're saying here.
Yes, a bad choice of words when it comes to rental, yes.
But, but just, just so y'all know, when me and Michael was having this discussion with Mister Terry, that was based on the fact that he hadn't sold his properties and he needed access down there. Now, now, that's what I'm saying, he has nothing binding him to the county. And I believe that's what his, his endgame is just to.
Get out all together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, so motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Kroom, to authorize Attorney Schuler to create an amendment to this lease from Mister Randall Terry that includes a fifty thousand dollar buyout to bring back to us for approval whenever it gets, the quickest it can get done, next meeting or shortly thereafter. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right Commissioners, item number two, I was informed by the TDC administrative staff that Mister Rex Pannikoff will step away from his seat on the TDC board effective December thirty-first. Should I follow the same advertising procedure that was done to fill the last two vacancies on the TDC board?
Mister Row, I'll ask you a question.
Sir.
I haven't had a chance to do it, I just haven't taken the chance, I guess. So the last time we, we advertised, we did have an applicant that was only one point different from the number two. So if they're still interested, can we just appoint them or how does the board feel about that?
That's your choice, that's what I was, that's what I'm asking.
That was Miss Michelle McPherson.
Yeah, that's one of the things that the TDC staff asked me to consider, you know, would the board, would this board like to look at that? So I said, I'll, I'll ask and see what they say.
Well, I haven't talked to her, so I don't know how she feels about it, if she's even still interested, but.
Mister Chairman, my question is she still?
Yeah, I, I didn't ask, I, I just wanted some direction from this board before I.
So, so can we ask her to know, cause we have time, it's till December?
Okay.
And then maybe we consider it at a future meeting?
Okay.
And see if, if she's still interested.
Bring her back up if she, well, either which way, I'll bring her back, okay.
Is that okay?
Mister, yeah, I will say this though, now we have the policy now, so I'm not opposed to opening it back up either to the, to the whole process. So that way we're following our policy that we voted on how many years or not years, months back. That's just my, my thought, but I'm okay with that too. And you coming back with us to the next meeting, but I, again, personally would like to start, do the whole process. And if she wants to reapply, then she can reapply. That's just my fault.
I'll bring you back, it'll be on my next report.
All right.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Mister Rex Pannikoff has been on that TDC board for a long, long time. I'd like to have him recognized with a plaque.
Okay.
And everything.
Absolutely.
If your schedule is good, first meeting in December, Commissioner, that works for you?
Well, you can do, first meeting, second meeting, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, yeah, but I would definitely like him because he is a miracle walking. And I would definitely like to have him here.
He does a lot for this community too, not only with TDC, but with the East Point Civic Association and, you know, he's always doing something with his business to, to donate and promote and help with the county and I'm in full agreement with that.
Good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Act, item number three, Ms. Sharon Rixby, she's from Alligator Points and Theresa Association, would like the board to close Alligator Drive from the Old Firehouse to the Marina for the Alligator Point Christmas Golf Cart Parade. That's gonna be on, starting at noon on Saturday, December fourteenth. Ms. Dottie Thurnborg is requesting closure of Highway ninety-eight on Friday, December thirteenth for the East Point Christmas Parade. For that parade, participants would line up at the corner of Franklin Street and Highway ninety-eight. At four thirty, the parade will travel east on Highway ninety-eight, ending at the corner of School Road and Highway ninety-eight. There will be a break in the, in the lineup for Taylor's backdoor traffic. The sheriff will be advised of both road closures. Board action to approve both, closure of both roads for their parade.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioner, and Mister Chairman, I know you kind of want like at the beginning of the year, one big motion for all these closures. I'm, I'm kind of working on that, we're getting this slowly, but surely, everything else is informational. I want to make sure everybody had a chance to look at the ordinance, public portal. The last time I brought it up, it went, it, it was going to automatically download, they've since fixed that where it opens up as a viewer, you can see the ordinance and decide if you want to download or just look at it and see. If you guys are good with it, I will have Courtney and Kim to go up and load up all the ordinances on it and then we'll put a link on the website for the public.
Yes, I'm good with it.
And keeping in mind, this is software we are already paid for, it's not, I can use this word, it's free, kind of. Courtney's attending ship administrative conference workshop next week. Oh, this one. So, item number six, you guys know about the sidewalk project there in Lanark Village. Engineer will be at your next meeting, probably on Zoom because they're down in Orlando or Tampa. But he will make a present, a short presentation about the project, the changes that they want to make, that shift. If you have any questions, he would ask that you send it ahead of time so you can incorporate your questions or comments into his presentation. If you need his number or email, let me know.
Okay, so Mister Chairman, so you, there's, there's shift and see, we, we're not in communication with them very well with this project. So, you know, I've got a lot of people out there concerned about this and this is the reason why I'm asking you this. So what they're saying is they're evaluating shifting the alignment from the north side of the road to the south side.
And I sent you a map too, in, in the email. I think I put the map as, as a link and I sent it in a previous email to you guys.
Yeah, I couldn't get the link, but that's what I'm saying, I just, why are they doing that? Because you're gonna have to cross ninety-eight, two places right there.
And that's why he, he would like, Commissioner, for you to reach out to him and talk to him about it so he can, you know, you, I mean, you have a discussion prior to his presentation, but he can incorporate your comments and, you know, some of your concerns in the presentation.
I think he needs to make it more public oriented because a lot of people have been contacting me trying to find out how they can find out where they're gonna shift it to. Now you're saying it's not gonna be on the north side, they want to shift it to the south side.
No, a lot of it has to do with wetland impacts.
Probably.
That, unless you're coming.
You got more wetlands on the south side than you do on the north side.
According to the gentleman, when I called him and talked to him, if they keep it on the north side through that section, they're gonna have to build a significant bridge there that's not gonna be able to go.
That around the flooding area out there at, um.
But if they go to the south side, they can just have it on great. So that's, that's what they were doing.
That's odd.
That's what they were discussing.
And Mister Chairman, I think a lot of the reason too is property, people with property, the right of ways aren't wide enough if you're going along ninety-eight. It's very, very small, so maybe that's another reason why they're doing it as well, is to not kind of have to impede on people's personal property that they have to either buy them out or do a, what do you call it, eminent domain, which I know they don't want to do. So that's my thought.
That slows down a project.
Well, and, and one thing that concerns me with this is a few months back, Commissioner Ward and myself both asked DOT to look at a crosswalk right there at that finish station. Remember that?
Yep.
They said, no, we don't need. They said, no, we don't need no crosswalk, now you're looking at two crosswalks.
Yeah, you are.
That's because they want to do it now, though.
Huh?
Because they want to do it now.
Now they want to do it.
Well, I tell you what...
It is a good idea when it's their idea.
What we can do is say, you throw a crosswalk in there at Spring Street, going across ninety-eight towards Finesse Station. You know what I'm saying? I'll tell, hey.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question on this, this Sun Trail, how far do they, the state, project us to go?
Oh, it's gonna finish up at Pensacola.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes, sir, it not, it won't happen in our lifetime, but that's where it's going. It's gonna go all the way through.
I mean, it don't make no, no sense why they put this section out, um, I just don't, it don't...
Well, that's what he's wanting to meet us about, so he'll tell you what, what they're trying to think.
Yeah, who knows what they're thinking?
Who knows what they're thinking, though? Okay.
All right, Commissioner, item seven, the streetlights, you guys told me to go ahead, you know, and approve those, the minimum, the, item eight. I know some of you guys are wondering about the parking lot fundraiser, I didn't bring it at the last meeting, they didn't, I didn't get the request until days before. I want to thank, publicly thank Commissioner Amerson that, you know, to help, that we ran into a little traffic issue with that on Friday afternoon, uh, because, try not to blame anybody, but, you know, the south side of Leslie Street was torn up, that was fine before the, before the project started, now the project seems to have paused. But anyway, it caused a traffic problem, and since, you know, I was kind of restricted to the house, I won't use the term that Commissioner Amerson used, but I was home, you know, and so he fixed that issue. And we'll have to look at this in the future, depending on how quickly the city moves with this Leslie Street project. But all's well that ends well, and let's see, your next meeting date's November nineteenth.
All right, anyone else have anything for Mr. Moron, so, before we move on?
Can I? I got about three or four items I want real quick to go through, it's not gonna be a lot, but I think he needs to, to do this. We talked about Rex Penikoff, we had to do everything out in the public, don't we?
Just put...
Okay, we have to do everything out in the public, so we've got one special person that is retiring January first. She spent thirty-four years in the property appraiser's office. I want something special done for Rhonda Skipper.
Okay.
And you also have, um, uh, Mr. Rick Watson, he's retiring, but I want something special done for Rhonda. Thirty-four years in the property appraiser's office, she spent her whole time with me on this board. So, I mean, that says a lot, and she has advanced ways in the property appraisers that has complemented the people and the residents of Franklin County. She is the only one left, except a couple, that, that myself and Attorney Schuler was talking about the other day, that comes from the John James era in property appraisers. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but that's one thing. The other thing is, I would like for the board to support me in requesting a, a copy of DEP management plan for the Ballpoint State Park, and I need the management plan with any additions or addendums. There, I don't know what they have in their plans, but when I rode down there and saw it clear cut down there, where you can see the roofs all the way to the Ballpoint Road, you can see the roofs of their house across there, it's concerned me. And the way it's looking, I, I just want to know that they have incorporated the new additions of land to the park that they purchased back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, somewhere along, somewhere along in there, and making sure that they are practicing BMPs, which is best management practices.
Okay.
Um, and I think it would be, I know in the past, we've had representatives from this board on their management plan committees, but I don't know what their thoughts are now, that's one thing. Then the other item is trash on Alligator Point. It's come to my attention that they also have problems with some debris haven't been picked up. So, the, the message is for them to call the emergency management office and tell them where the stuff is, and then they'll send somebody out there, that's good. But the other thing is, we've got people piling trash, yard debris, on the sidewalk down there, and on some of it, a couple of places, that may be on the bike path, don't want to do it on the bike path, don't want to do it on those sidewalks, I've talked to Mr. Fonda Davis this morning, and he said, please put it on the right of way out from around any power lines or anything, do not put it on the sidewalks, and do not put it on the bike path. So, that, that's that.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Mm-hmm, and the other issue is, I haven't heard from Caleb or anybody about the, the problem that they had, the, the flooding back during, um, Hurricane Elaine. I haven't heard anything back on that, so I just wanted to give an update, that there's no update.
The Kentucky Street?
The Kentucky Avenue, yeah. Yeah, and, uh, but, again, thank you, board members, for supporting District Two's, uh, uh, legislative allocation to go to the EMS, I am so proud of that, we need to get on the, for the next phase, too, but that's what my thoughts were right there.
All right, any other Commissioners have anything for Mr. Moron? So, we do have a meeting here in fourteen days, Attorney Schuler, up to you.
Uh, two action items for the board's consideration, um, one involves the SBA tower lease. Seems time sensitive, so I'm bringing it up at today's meeting instead of the next meeting, and the issue is this, they, SBA, the owner of the towers, proposing an initial five-year term of the lease with, with multiple five-year renewals. That becomes an issue because I also understand that we are working on a countywide emergency management grant that'll put in this new system, twelve to fifteen million dollars to do it, and that the estimated time schedule, as I understand it, is between three and five years for, for the completion of your new emergency management communication system. The unknown that I, I, and the reason I'm bringing this up to you is I'm not real sure if that new system, I don't know if anybody knows yet, but is this new emergency management system going to use existing towers that we put antennas on? Or are they, are we going to build our own towers? I don't know.
It's gonna be a little bit of both, so the first phase is actually design and permitting, and we can put in the design where we want the towers to be, if, if that's an existing tower, we can add it to the design. Isn't that correct, Ms. Sharon?
That's correct.
So, the first stage is actually the design stage?
Yeah, that's when we'll know.
Yes, so we could incorporate that, is what I'm, yes.
Okay, and, and the reason I'm bringing that up is, do we want to go with an initial five-year lease term and see where we are in five years, or go with, propose to them a three-year lease term and see where we are in three years in terms of the planning and the build-out?
I'd say three, myself.
That's, that's up to y'all, I'm good with it.
I'd say three.
Okay, everybody good with that, because that, that's kind of my thoughts as well, so...
Okay, you'd have a deadline to have to...
Do, do, do we need to make a motion for that, or just direct you?
Uh, just, direction is good, I mean, I had it as an action item, but I, I'd need to go back to them and say, well, the board wants a three-year initial term with, with multiple three-year renewals, and, and they've already indicated that they're open to that, so I think we're okay with that.
Okay.
Uh, then the other action item or discussion item, and actually, I think this will require action because it's a notice from the board to the public that the chairman had asked me to bring up regarding some infrastructure improvements on St. George Island, so, Mr. Chairman, you may want to flesh that out a little bit.
Yeah, so, so, uh, as, as everybody's probably aware, we have several encroachments on the county right-of-way in St. George Island, and as Consolidated has started doing their fibered installation on the island, they run into several issues. You know, and so, anyway, long story short, i- if they run across it and, and they need to move it, they're just gonna move it. What I was trying to do from the county side is at least give the residents a notice, saying, look, they're gonna be working, and if, if, if you have anything that you think is in the county right-of-way that you want to retain, you might want to move it, because when they come through, they're just gonna come through. So, but in addition to that, since we are gonna issue a notice, we probably need to issue a notice for that right-of-way to be cleared anyway, because we have several stormwater issues that we need to address that we currently can't address, because we have people with stuff in our right-of-way. So, that, that kind of language probably needs to be added to that notice.
Well, I had included a proposed draft for the board to look at and consider approving. Let's get to it, so, is, is the board okay with that draft as written with the additional language? If I understand it correctly, Mr. Chairman, that, that says, and y'all haven't said by what date certain, but you want, the, the board wants the, all of the right-of-ways cleared of private obstructions?
Yes.
I guess, other than driveways, I mean, the driveways. Okay, so that would be, be things like removing, uh, I had put in here, including, but not necessarily, limited to driveway materials, landscaping, dirt piles, I mean, that, I'm sure there's all sorts of things that we're not...
There's rocks, there's all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, is the board okay with that draft notice as it's been proposed for a modification?
Yep, I think we are.
Now, I, I would request board approval, um, if, if it's not time-sensitive, I can make the amendment and bring it back to you at the November nineteenth meeting, or, Mr. Chairman, is there something that needs to be approved and sent out today?
Well, I, I mean, Consolidated's already there working, that's the only reason I, I wanted to do it at the last meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't try to force that issue, you know what I mean? But they are currently working, and I think they're working two or three crews, so...
They're moving it quick.
They're moving.
I mean, it's, Mr. Chairman, it's pretty self-explanatory, I mean, just move your stuff. So, I mean, I'm gonna, uh, motion to approve this notice as drafted.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Amerson, any additional discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous?
And then some guidance from the board on the mail-out, I have spoken to the property appraisers' office, there are two options available to the board, um, and I'm going to give you rounded numbers, these are not specific numbers down to the, the last individual, but roughly there are thirty-six hundred total parcels on St. George Island of improved and unimproved properties. So, your options are to send this, you know, by postal service to all of the parcels on St. George Island, vacant and improved parcels, or just send the notices to the improved parcels, and that brings the number down closer to roughly twenty-one hundred parcels of property.
I don't think there should be any unimproved parcels that we have problems with.
Yeah.
That's my thinking is what I...
Yeah, I think just the improved parcels.
Okay, okay, cool.
Now, let's just hope the postal service gets it to them in a timely manner.
Here we go.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you for that, and then just as an information item, um, the, I have included a notice of the, the second workshop on the potential PUD enabling ordinance that will happen on November the twelfth at five thirty-five PM in this room before your P and Z Board of Adjustment to take further public comment. And then the public hearing on the proposed policies and procedures for the code enforcement ordinance will be held November nineteenth at eleven AM. That's it.
Uh, one more thing I have for you before we go.
Yes, sir.
Uh, when we first did what we're doing now with the PUD enabling ordinance, we had already hired Ms. Mills to look at the potential PUD for the landings.
That's correct.
And then we found out we didn't have a, a PUD enabling ordinance on the books, so we tasked her with that. At that time, we, none of us knew Mr. Steele from the ARPC yet, we were trying to work out, because Mark had quit, we were trying to find a planner. I feel comfortable enough that I think, and, and talking with him about it, I think we need to maybe revise this contract with Ms. Mills and let her do the PUD enabling ordinance, let her work on the special district for St. George Island after that's finished. But any PUD that's handled needs to be handled by our planner that we've hired. So, whether it's the landings or somebody else, I, I know we, we've done it different that way to begin with, but things were different when we did it, and I think it would be clearer going forward, and, and he was in favor of that, actually, because he said as, as a planner, it would help him to have discussion with Ms. Mills as he's walking through any potential PUD that the county might, might receive. So, I, I just wanted to bring that up today, I know it ain't an action item for today, but at some point, we need to have that discussion and, and see what we can do about it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
I'm hearing instructions to me to bring that up on my report at the next meeting.
That'll be fine.
Mr. Chairman, glad you brought that up, because I have gotten emails with concerns of a conflict of interest with her doing both. So, I mean, so there's something, something we can discuss at the next meeting.
Right, right.
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's totally at the pleasure of the board, I mean, it's, it's not a conflict of interest, but it's the pleasure of the board for you hired to do that, this is perfectly fine to amend the contract and...
Yeah, so we can consider it at the next meeting, but we've, we've hired Mr. Steele that, that works with us through the Regional Planning Council.
I'm impressed.
I'm, I'm good with him, so I'm good with him walking us through any PUD we might receive, and I can see the benefit of Ms. Mills having a singular focus of helping us make the ordinance instead of trying to walk through the ordinance.
I, I don't anticipate her having any issues with the contract amendment, I mean, she understands, as I do, that it is at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'll bring that up on my report at the next meeting.
Okay, anyone else have anything for Attorney Schuler?
I've got one item, Leonard Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you clarify why we have a barn ban? I know a lot of people are forgetting on my case about that, while we, the, the county is not lifting the barn ban, so could you clarify that with public?
Yes, ma'am, we, we had to, when the Leonard Village Fire Department is, is essentially and effectively dissolved before the board took official action to deactivate that volunteer fire department, the burn ban was put in place for public safety, and it was going to remain in, in effect as an emergency ordinance until the volunteer department in Leonard Village was up and running and operational, and they're not there yet. They're closed, but they're not there yet. I mean, that's my memory.
Yeah, but, and two, because, uh, in addition to that, because we're receiving assistance from the Carabelle Fire Department to help cover Leonard Village.
Yes.
So, that's another reason that there's an actual ban on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Trying to reduce the calls that Carabelle would have to make to Leonard Village, is what we're...
Well, some members of the public think that we can just go in there and wipe it out clean, but the, the way we got there was a process.
Yes.
And we get, need to just follow through with the process and eventually, they're concerned with the ISO ratings. The ISO ratings out there in District Two are ten. Uh, I know that's high, and it is high, because I have to pay the ten, too, so, also, but, but, I mean, we're, we're trying to give the Leonard, Leonard Fire Department the shot in the arm that it needs, and you have to consider, all things said and done, they are volunteers, volunteers. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't want to jeopardize the public safety with, with folks that are not clearly all the way trained on what they need to do. So, that, I mean, that's what I told the constituent that confronted me at the post office, that I, I didn't feel comfortable until it was all said and done, and they were ready to take the helm, in other words. But, anyway, I just wanted that clarified for public record.
Anyone else? Any Commissioner comments today? Basketball season starts today at Franklin County, the middle schools play in Port St. Joe and East Ford. So, if you have nothing else going on on Election Day, there's always basketball.
And tell us, I guess, and tell us how the Seahawks football team is doing.
So, they faltered a little bit at the end, but they still wind up with a six-and-four record. They have an off week this week, and then they're playing their playoff game next week. I'm not a hundred percent sure who they're playing in the playoffs, but I think it's only the second time that they've ever made it to the playoffs.
That's good. I remember the year, I remember the year nineteen seventy, when it went all the way, Carabelle went all the way to state. I remember when Appalachian Chukela went to state.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
I mean, we had some football teams back then.
Vadel, Vadel Bunyan, I don't know if he's still around, but, he, uh, Vadel, remember Vadel? He was like one of our best players, that was back when, um, Too Legit quit was our, was our motto.
I, I disagree, this is Commissioner comments, guys, y'all say what you want to.
I'm just saying, don't, don't say that about Vadel Bunyan. We, we play together, so...
Ours, ours was underneath Tex Young, and the coach was Tex Young and, and Mr. Matt Clark.
Yep.
And, uh, and I'll, so, yeah, good time.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, for the people that haven't voted yet, get out and vote, I mean, you can't complain or make a statement if you didn't go out and be the, be a solution to, to the problem, and I just want to wish all the candidates, I know running a campaign is not easy, and I'm just blessed, um, I want to thank, um, for being unopposed and having to run in a campaign. I'm here to serve another four years, and I'm, I'm proud, and I'm happy, and I'm humbled, and I'm... And I'm looking forward to these next four years. And I, I wish the best of blessings to all the candidates out there that are out there trying to, to, um, ask for your vote and be a, be a part of the county.
Yeah, I was proud of Franklin County. I talked to the supervisor relation Saturday. She said we were at sixty-one, sixty-two percent. And that's just with the early votes and absentees. And that's in Franklin County, you know? So, you know, and then I looked at, uh, WCTV said that early votes and absentees for Leon County was four thousand four hundred and forty-one, I think they said it was. And I'm saying, they're, I mean, they've got a bunch of voters up there. But see, this is, this is, everybody knows this is what our country's built on. Right.
So everybody...
I'll just be glad when it's over. Nobody's gonna know what to talk about on the news. They'll have to be like...
You're right.
Commercials.
Any other Commissioner comments? I mean, you do.